I am calling the meeting to order of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of Silver City, today being December the 5th, 2025. This is a continuation of the previous meeting held on December the 2nd, and we will resume where we left off. I will be reading a statement after we have done the pledge and the salute to the New Mexico flag. If you would be good enough to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the symbol of perfect friendship amongst all United nations.
Thank you. If I could ask staff for a roll call.
Commissioner Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Bayless?
Present.
Chairman Whedon Smith?
Present.
And we will be picking up with a conditional use permit 25-003, but before we get into that, I'm going to read a statement. Any application made before the council passed the new ordinance must be considered using the ordinance effect at the time of the completed application. The Planning and Zoning Commission is required to evaluate applications for permits by assessing facts taken only from sworn testimony during the hearing and then evaluate the required findings using only those facts. Planning and Zoning Commission must issue a permit if the required findings are met. After 20 public input statements and nine sworn testimonies, the following points are obvious: Please do not testify on them because they will be considered redundant. We are aware of the concern over humidity and its effects. We are aware of the concern over odor. We are aware of a need for effective HVAC systems and HEPA filters. We are aware of the concern of adult-only businesses and a need for more foot traffic. The presiding officer can use discretion and impose reasonable limitations on the number of witnesses to be heard and on the nature and length of their testimony. Testimony that is legislative-only, that could have been raised in the planning and zoning meetings over the last year, will be limited. Repetitive testimony will be limited. Testimony not related to the facts presented and the required findings may be limited. There were sidebar conversations. The chair let that happen since Robert's rules does say strict enforcement may sometimes be counterproductive. Those concerns that are raised are very important for future legislation. However, today, order will be called when sidebars happen. The town attorney is here to answer the staff and commission questions, not ones from the public. If a witness has a question on a point of law, they should acquire their own legal advice and present it as their own testimony. Legal questions will only be directed to the attorney by a commissioner or staff member. Except for cross-examining, all testimony must be presented to the commission. No questions or comments may be made to staff or members of the audience. So when you're testifying, testify, and when you're finished, if any questions, please answer them, otherwise resume your seat. Now, because of the 20 public input statements and the fact that 24 people were sworn in, nine testified, 15 did not, there will be a limit on testimony. It's going to be three minutes. We've discussed this with the town attorney. So I encourage you to think through your sentences when you do come forward and testify. Thank you. We're now resuming the public hearing, and we did have a gentleman, as I recall, who had just finished testifying. If you would be good enough to complete your testimony, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The 205 Bullard you're considering for permitting for occupancy for the premier intersection in historic downtown district is the most densely developed area in the town, with over 80% parking utilization according to the Downtown Action Plan. The building that is applying has a quarter acre foot footprint and half an acre of floor space. It was originally designed for retail. If the conditional use permit is awarded and conflicts arise, the town has little recourse except to enforce the nuisance ordinance regarding odor and noise. Recently, the town has proven that it was ineffective with this type of enforcement, with a bad actor on 306 Bullard. Similarly, the town did not act around 25 years ago with the helmet factory where the hub is now located. Over several years, the town could not act on the odor issue using issues created by the factory. Some litigation ensued, resulting in several neighbors receiving liens on their homes. In that instance, the town did not use foresight regarding future consequences. It is imperative the town now be very cognizant of the consequences of locating cannabis facilities downtown. Since the town has had issues enforcing noise and fractions in the past, if conditional use permits are granted today, it should only be for a limited duration. The town should then consider creating an amortization clause for non-conforming use in the historic downtown district and rezone the historic district north of College Avenue to commercial to accommodate the existing cannabis facility. The town's historic district needs to completely support families, children, and tourists. As a person affiliated with WNU, we utilize the downtown historic district to help sell applicants, whether faculty, staff, or students, on the positive things that Silver City can offer. The bad hemp actor that the town was unable to deal with caused the university to change some of their approaches. Growing and manufacturing cannabis is toxic. That is why ventilation is required, especially for enclosed subterranean facilities. These additional ventilation arguably requires four times the ventilation that a regular retail business would require. This is an additional, that's an additional noise as well as happens when, so what happens when there's a power outage? The odor, the toxins will permeate downtown and risk the health and safety of not only the workers, but those sleeping in the densest bedroom populated area in the downtown area. The town is-
Could you please finish out?
Yes.
Thank you.
The town is taking on considerable liability if this application is approved. The tallest building in Silver City is located across Texas Street with open windows much of the year, which is affected by sound. The proposal is not in harmony-
Sir, at this point, you are now round the border. Thank you.
I wish this also, well, I guess I can't say anything.
We're already one minute over the three-minute limit. Thank you, sir. Would the next person please come forward, state your name, and then proceed? And I will hold my hand up when you're getting close to the three minutes.
Okay, and I'll acknowledge that when you do it.
Thank you.
So I know. All right. Good afternoon, commissioners and town council. My name is Cecilia McNichol. I am the owner of the commercial building at 211 North Texas that is within a few feet of the applicant's proposed activity. The building at 211 North Texas provides rental spaces that support for local businesses. I am here to testify on record that I do not support approval of the applicant's request for a conditional use permit to operate a commercial cannabis business anywhere in the town of Silver City's historic district. This includes any approval that may attach conditions, modifications, or restrictions. It is my understanding that in order for the conditional use application to be approved, you all up there must ensure, and that is a big word with a very specific meaning, that means that you are going to guarantee that a specific outcome or a particular condition is met. That's your promise to us in the community. I repeat, to guarantee. Ensuring means that you take the responsibility and promised our community that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and will not impair the integrity and characteristic of the historic district. I would like to state in brief for the record the four criteria: Public health, adjoining property values, harmony in the area, and conformity with the plan. There are plenty of locations other than the historic district where this type of use is permitted. It is my opinion that the applicant has not put forth any compelling reasons to indicate this request for approval of this type of non-conforming use in the historic district is a reasonable request. My review of the applicant's request does not reveal positive contributions for the integrity and characteristic of the historic district. As a matter of fact, it has several negative impacts on the integrity and character of the district. My recommendation is to deny the permit because of the negative impacts. Oops, my papers stick together. Does that count? Take the minutes off.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I can't get it open. There we go. Okay. So the negative effects, in my opinion, are the value of the commercial property and others predictably will decline that are in the area. The sustainability will be jeopardized for the four businesses located at 211 North Texas, all which have long-term leases and which have been in business, some of them for as many as 15 years. Short-term and long-term undesirable environmental consequences to the community and visitors, non-harmonious activities that degrades the integrity and character of the historic district. Agreed importance is a lack of trust between the town of Silver City and the merchants who believed and trusted that the area designated as a historic and cultural district would be protected. Many of the property owners have invested time, money, and futures with the belief that this would be a worthwhile endeavor to be a part of the town of Silver City's historic and cultural district. Now, there is uncertainty that the integrity and characteristics will be protected. If a conditional use permit is approved personally, I will feel misled by our community leaders and will be inclined to sell my property and invest elsewhere. The gain of one individual at the negative expense of many others, financial health, safety, and community integration. Okay, so I'll finish up with my recommendations, that I would consider amending the permitted uses in the historic district by using the amortization land use planning tool. We should all recognize the value of learning from the mistake of others. Colorado, which our northern neighbor, has a whole list of towns where they have done just that one thing: Greeley, Fort Morgan, Estes Park, Vale, Breckenridge, they took and used amortization tool, Manitou Springs. So in summary, I would ask that you err on the side of caution, and I dare say nobody in this room, probably even anybody in the county, has the expertise or knowledge to evaluate the short-term and long-term impacts of the applicant's proposed activity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the next person who's sworn in would like to testify and hasn't yet, please come forward and state your name. Thank you. And I will, when it's time to stop.
Okay, I'll try to look up every now and then. I'm Jennifer Osen. I'll share what other towns have discovered through their own trial and error and give you some examples of legislation communities worldwide have put in place after experiencing nuisances. In Denver, a 2019 University of Colorado study found an initial association between the opening of dispensaries and increased crime and disorder rates in certain Denver neighborhoods. Areas with the dispensary saw increased crime rates that were between 26% and 1,452% higher than those without commercial cannabis activity. To be transparent, I'll let you know that the association did weaken over time but not diminish completely. Multiple studies show that the presence of cannabis products in communities correlates with an increase in calls to poison control centers and ER visits for unintentional ingestion by children. In early 2023, smoking cannabis in public was banned in Amsterdam's red light district. People who smoke in public there can be fined up to 100 euros. An obvious mandate would be that each licensee implement adequate activated carbon filtration to minimize odorous matter. Let's not just take each applicant's word for it. A good odor control plan, which is one of the most common regulatory requirements for cannabis businesses, should detail what mitigating measures the cultivator implement. The Santa Barbara Coalition for Responsible Cannabis partnered with area growers to study one method of reducing, no, I didn't say eliminating, their resulting odor. They found that scrubbers significantly reduced odor emissions by 83.9%. An amazing difference, but the system still leaves 16.1% of the malodorous air escaping into the surrounding neighborhood. The number of scrubbers for a commercial cannabis facility requires a detailed calculation. If the applicant's 30,000 square foot facility has 10-foot ceilings, they would need three scrubbers. These scrubbers run at $20,000 apiece. The objective standard for smells is called the nasal ranger, where you place the device on your nose and turn a dial and it is like sniffing somebody's armpit or dirty feet. Standing next to a flower and cannabis bud, the smell would be a level seven. Another course to prevent a concentration of cannabis businesses in the historic district, anyway, to, I'll quote a study, oh, it's time, isn't it?
Can you wrap it up?
I will wrap it up. Okay. An additional one dispensary per square mile in a zip code was cross-sectionally associated with a 6.8% increase in the number of marijuana hospitalizations with a marijuana abuse/dependence code. Let's add now to limit the density of cannabis businesses in the proportionately small part of Silver City's owned as the commercial historic district.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Would the next person who is sworn in but has not yet testified, please come forward and state your name. And a reminder, it's a three-minute clock. Thank you.
Could I come up to the podium and give you my exhibits without cutting into my time?
Please.
Thank you. My name is Blake Farley, and I'm the owner and qualifying broker for the largest real estate company in town. Granted, we're still tiny compared to cities, but we currently hold the number one ranking for the sales in Grant County. I've been in the industry for almost 20 years, and I've owned the brokerage for nine. Skip through my introduction, and I'm just going to get to the point. You have not heard anyone talk about criteria number two. The approving of this application must not injure the value of nearby properties, and I'm here to talk about real estate. As we get into this conversation, I have to briefly explain a legal term called adverse material fact. In real estate in New Mexico, a seller has a duty to disclose any adverse material fact. We have to contend with a form called the seller's disclosure, which is Exhibit B. Exhibit, I'm sorry, Exhibit A, the New Mexico mandatory disclosure. Exhibit B is an explanation of adverse material facts. The definition for adverse material facts is listed on your Exhibit B, and I wanted to discuss that, but now I'm just going to let you read it. But I will point out that very quickly, an adverse material fact is a fact, any information about a property or the surrounding area that could influence a buyer's decision to purchase, or the price they are willing to pay, and therefore must be disclosed if known could negatively affect the value, desirability, use, or enjoyment of the property and is known to the seller but is not readily discoverable to the buyer. So when the city sent out their 45 letters to everybody within the 300 square foot radius, that was a disclosure. And all of those people now are going to have to wonder if they have to file a disclosure if they go to sell their property, because if you will look at Exhibit A, which is our seller's disclosure, and you'll turn to page four, number nine, you will see that the New Mexico Association of Realtors in the adverse materials fact document list on number nine hazardous environment and toxic situations, and they have cannabis production as one of their listed hazardous, environmental, and toxic disclosures. Okay. So if you approve this conditional use permit, you put at risk all the property values of the nearby properties, all the property owners will now have to consider if the cannabis production facility is creating an adverse material fact, they will have to disclose if they ever want to sell their property. When the town of Silver City sent those disclosures out, about 40, 45, that list of owners may have to disclose cannabis production facility, especially if the existence affects the environment or the enjoyment of the property for sale. Please look at my Exhibit B again and read about the enjoyment of property description. So I have to ask you, if approving this application means that it could potentially, that the surrounding property owners may potentially have to disclose the existence of a cannabis facility production place, will that impact their value? According to the definition of, I'm sorry-
Can you wrap it up? Wrap it up?
Well, then the other thing I handed out was Exhibit B, which goes over property values specifically in the historic district. I can say that days on the market are longer, fewer properties are selling, and we have more commercial properties than we have ever had. So I guess that's the final point. I can show with evidence, three minutes is not really long enough, and I wish I would have known that because I spent a lot of time on this, but I can show, and you do have evidence in front of you, that nearby property values have been harmed by the existence of cannabis downtown and that just the existence of this facility will trigger mandatory disclosure of or hazardous adverse material facts, creating a burden on all of the property owners. Do you want to ask me any questions? Because there's a lot of data I've given you.
There is a lot of data, and this is information that previous witnesses have not presented. Commissioner Moody, have you any questions?
No.
Commissioner Bayless?
No.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes, Blake, the adverse material facts, where did that concept originate?
Well, it's a legal term, so it's all about disclosure, having to disclose. And so I don't know, I wouldn't be able to answer where it originated. I mean, it's just kind of like asking about where any legal term originated, but it is-
But in the realty industry?
It's, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, so there is a New Mexico statute that a seller must disclose all adverse material facts. Now, I do want to mention, I looked at the statutes, the statutes have not been revised since 2021, so I wasn't able to find anything because cannabis was not in effect at that time, but I know that the new statutes, when they do come out, will be addressing some of those things.
Thank you.
Okay.
Staff, did you have any questions?
Yes, I just, I do have a question. Is the disclosure for adverse material facts for the subject property for sale, or is it regarding the properties adjoining?
It could, the definition is that it could influence, an adverse material fact is any fact or information about a property or the surrounding area that could influence a buyer's decision to purchase, the price they're willing to pay, and that must be disclosed. And particularly if it negatively affects the desirability, use, or enjoyment of the property.
Thank you. No other questions? I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
And is the next person who's been sworn in-
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Oh, thank you. Who has been sworn in but hasn't spoken yet, if you would like to approach, and please state your name and then proceed. We have three minutes at a limit.
Hi, my name is John Eater. I'm resident Silver City. I'd just like to say that there's a certain odor to this whole process for this application that it's not cannabis. It's an odor I've smelled before in other development projects where the system is being pushed and used in an inappropriate way. I think that this body found itself the other evening and today in this position, this awkward position that we're all in, as a result of inexperienced city staff. I was told that the folder for this application only held one or two sheets of paper, but was still claimed to be complete. I would ask, where's a sign-off from the fire department? Is there adequate water flow in the area to put out a fire in a manufacturing facility? Where's the nearest fire hydrant? Are there major connections to the building to support four-inch large diameter hose? If there's living quarters upstairs, where's the emergency exit plant? Where's the exterior fire escape for those residents in the affordable housing? Has there been a sign-off by an electrical engineer that the electrical system is safe and can support the added electrical load of a manufacturing facility? What about a sign-off of a registered HVAC engineer that says no scent, or no fumes, or no odors will be detected off-site? That means you have to have extensive filtration system. Does the building need to be sprinkler for fire exposure? On and on. This is a big project. It's not a shoe store. It's not a toy store. You know, it needs to be thoroughly analyzed from all aspects, and I think right now, somebody's putting their thumbs on the scale to make this happen, and it's not fair to the rest of the people in Silver City. And honestly, we're represented by the four of you. So, you know, what we believe in, what we think, what we hope for is in your hands, and I hope you'll consider that when you deliberate this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. Did the fire department and police respond to the application?
Yes, chairman, and in regard to some of the comments that are stated, this is regarding the use only. The process will continue past this point based on regulations at the state level, based on building code, based on other regulations that are applicable to the use, because the use is conditional. This is only regarding the use.
And presumably would apply to issues such as the kind of doors, the kind of partitions. Again, this is a use permit?
Correct.
Thank you. Would the next person who has been sworn in and has not yet testified, please come forward and state your name. A reminder, it is a three-minute limit, and I will indicate when you're getting close to it. I would also remind you that, as I mentioned earlier, that we're aware of HVAC issues, HEPA issues, humidity issues, and all those factors. So if you want to talk about that, that's repetitive, and that is not consistent with what we're doing. I very much appreciate it. Thank you. Would the next person please come forward to testify? We've had five people so far. That means that there's another 11 who have been sworn in and have not testified. You sure nobody wants to testify who hasn't yet?
If we've already testified last meeting, we can't testify again?
I will put a limit on the amount of testifying. I'm aware of one citizen who asked specifically if they could retestify, and I'm not planning to reopen. to reopen testimony. I'm going to be very strict on, please stick to new facts. So, no, sorry. Three minutes.
So I'll give you less. My name's Mary Regans. I can speak to your point about the fact that there are many fewer people that stayed to testify compared to the sign-in sheet. The explanation that was given to the public at the beginning of the last meeting that resulted in those who wanted to testify was very unclear, and many of the people who sat in the audience, who signed that testimony intention, felt that to get up and give public input was sufficient as testimony. I know that as a fact. I know that when the explanation that I heard from staff happened, people were, they're making the face that Commissioner, I can't say your name, you're knitting your brows. That was exactly the expression on the face of those folks who signed up to testify but then did public input, thinking they didn't have to stay because of the confusion and how it was described, what the testimony, what it meant to sign the testimony sheet. So I'm not telling you what they were going to say. They've already said it in public input. I know for a fact they thought they'd done their job and left, which is why they're not here today, coupled with the fact that many of them are business people in the community and can't take the afternoon off to be here to repeat what they said under public input. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the next person who wishes to add to that previous testimony? Go ahead.
Wendy Raven Phillips. I just have two things to add to my testimony. One is I'd like to give the commission this, this letter. I covered most of it in my testimony, but I didn't bring up the idea that the commission, under Article Six, Six Point Two, asks that the commission require a citizen participation report because a cannabis retail in the historic district is controversial, high-impact, sensitive to public opinion, affecting a high-density commercial area, and potentially injures to long-term established businesses. So I'd like to submit this in paper so that it's not just what I was saying the other night. I'm not really clear all the time. And then the other thing is I just have a question for clarity. My understanding so far from talking to staff and the other meeting was that if you pass a conditional use permit, either this one or in the next one, that permit goes with the property in perpetuity? Am I correct there?
You're not entirely correct. I would ask the town attorney to expand on that. Thank you.
The New Mexico Cannabis Act says it is not. It's a one-year license. So our license would be also for one year to coincide with their state license. So it would, and it's not transferable either.
So is that one? Can--
Okay, please.
I, I don't understand the one-year thing. Is that from the time that they get their license?
I think the answer to your question is that it's not transferable, and it therefore is, that's it. It doesn't go in perpetuity.
So if, if a tenant is applying for a CUP and they go out of business two years later, where does that CUP go? Does it stop existing?
It goes to places where all CE, CUPs go, and they're expired.
Okay. So the--
It's expired, that's it.
So the owner of the property can't lease to some other business under that CUP right away?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who, can you give it to Staff? Thank you. Who wishes to add to their previous testimony? And there's still a three-minute limit. Thank you.
Marcia Sulestik, Silver City. I just wanted to say one more thing about the definition of harmony. Pointing to other similar downtown businesses is not a convincing argument for harmony, as depending upon their application timeframe, they would have needed a CUP and are prohibited under ordinance today. They exist as a tolerated non-conforming use and should not be a benchmark to weigh a new proposal against. Just want to make clear that we don't want to be a town of all cannabis uses downtown because they're now the benchmark. Just want to be clear about that. And the other thing I wanted to say was that I have photos of the applications, and I would encourage you to look at the, what it means to be deemed complete here and what was turned in before it was advertised and scheduled for hearing, and whether, in fact, everything had been turned in, because it hadn't been turned in when I was there only two days, a few days before the hearing, but it had all been scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that a question or a statement of fact?
It's a statement of fact.
Thank you. Would anyone else who would like to add to their testimony care to come for a three-minute limit? Thank you.
So this is kind of going based off of the statements that were made about the, like, doorways, the planning, and all that stuff, and I'm glad that you kind of addressed that, saying that this is just the initial for allowing us the use to form a plan that is up to code and ordinances and zoning and all that stuff. This just allows us to create a plan to construct that bottom area. And as far as where the location is, it's going to be, you're not going to be able to see it, you're not going to even know that it's there. That's the main thing. They're saying about addressing, or that question that you had asked about where that legal term came from, it would be something that needs to be addressed with every property owner with the existing thing that's on Broadway. That, that alone, if that's a concern, they're going to have to address that anyways, because there's an already existing business there within that same parameter that they would have to bring up that, what was the term, Blake?
Adverse material fact.
There you go. Adverse material fact. So they would already have to address that. I get the concern, again, it's just for me, it's just the opportunity to plan and to get, to see if this business is going to work and to go forward with it along with the other plans, addressing the alcohol, the doorways, stuff like that. There's not even a liquor license on property.
Can you just focus towards the commission?
Yeah. There, there's not a liquor license even on property. So in all reality, there's no, nothing that it needs to be turned into or can't be turned into because it's a blank slate. So that's what we're trying to get, the permission from planning and zoning, to construct the whole entire plan, not just focus on the cannabis. That is one element of the whole entire project. So with that being said, you know, I hear the stuff of what everybody's saying and the concerns, but in all reality, for every single thing that they say, there is a, there's an answer for it. And that just has to do with proper planning and construction and, and building out the facility correctly, you know? So if you guys have any questions about filtration systems, stuff like that, our head grower, who has twenty years of experience, is here and could even be talking about that, so--
Thank you. We're just focusing on the use permit itself. And just for the record, since I didn't hear it, it doesn't mean you didn't say it. Could you repeat your name?
My name is Ronald Quintana.
Thank you. Is there any questions from any commissioner? Seeing none from Staff? Thank you, sir. Would the next person who's already been sworn in and wishes to add to their testimony?
May I just say one thing, since my testimony was so rushed, in, in response to what Mr. Quintana just said? So I want to just point out that the fact that this conditional use permit application exists right now for this cannabis facility absolutely triggers the disclosure, the statutory reason for disclosure for an adverse material effect right now, today. So if I was going to put my property on the market, just one building over from the applicant's property, especially because this is not open and notorious, I would have to disclose this today, because can you imagine selling that property and that the owner, that this was going on in the background, and the owner did not know that this was going on, and then they buy the property, and then they find out? And also, in response to the idea of keeping the facility sort of not publicized, so no signs on it and no mention of it and things like that, is all the more reason why it would have to be disclosed. And in a case of adverse material disclosure, it, the buyer does not need to ask a question. It has to be preempted, the seller has to disclose it, and the more secretive or not open and notorious it is, the more it has to be disclosed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else who has been sworn in care to add to their testimony? Sir, three minutes.
My name is Jeffrey Castillo, and to go back to both Anthony's and Blake's comment, this, this disclosure that she's talking about is thrown out the door pretty much because, like I said in my last testament, every household around in New Mexico is allowed to grow six to twelve plants. So what she is saying is she would have to disclose to her sellers that the state of New Mexico allows this smell, permanent growing, everything in the whole state of New Mexico. So that pretty much gets thrown out the door.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else who is--
I just want to say that in the case that Jeffrey just pointed out, yes, if there has been cannabis production in a residential property, it is mandatory and statutory that that is disclosed.
Thank you very much.
Right, and six plants--
Could you, no side-bows, please. Please.
Cecilia McNichol.
Thank you.
Homegrown, six plants is a lot different than a commercial project of this scale. I happen to be one of those landowners, I mean, property owners, that has to disclose that now because my property is, is on the market, my commercial building. So I will now have to disclose that. And that does have an effect. I mean, everybody in all the states know that you can have, you know, recreational marijuana in your house. That's not a big deal. That's not what this is about. This is about commercial, subterranean production of cannabis, underground, three thousand square feet of it, and the environmental impacts. So I do have to disclose that, and it will have an effect.
Thank you.
Most cannabis manufacturing facilities are located in industrial districts for a reason. Our Town of Silver City Comprehensive Plan identifies that there are ninety-five acres for industrial use. It quotes "industrial-dash-manufacturing, warehouse, trucking, related uses, ninety-five acres." And that's on Page Three dash fifteen of that property document. This proposal is not in harmony and does not make sense. It does not make sense to go above and beyond the issue, to issue a special use permit for the manufacture of cannabis when the three closest neighbors are the only two downtown hotels and a courthouse.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Philip Cave. I am the general manager of the Murray Hotel. I did give my initial information during the public input, but I just wanted to make it official and go a little bit differently than I did the last time, but please just keep in mind, you know, the Murray Hotel is a family-based institution, and when families come to the downtown area, they want to go into all the stores. And if they're a family of, you know, two adults and a couple of kids that are not old enough to go into certain businesses, they're not experiencing as much as maybe they would like to experience downtown. So please keep in fact that downtown is geared towards tourism in many, many ways, not always. But also relating to tourism too, one of the things that I brought up the last time too, which is a situation that needs to be targeted downtown, and that is the transient situation. And there is a little bit of a connection between the transient situation and CBD shops, like I mentioned last time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's no transits in front of a shop.
You could say your name?
That the correlation between transits and downtown or cannabis dispensaries, there's no transients in front of our current location, so I don't know where that comes from. I just think that it's a problem with downtown in general, and they're associating it with cannabis. And I, I, I mean, to me, this is honestly like, it's almost like baffling just hearing some of the testimonies and stuff that already existed prior to any cannabis store opening up and problems within the community. We could sigh, we could roll our eyes, we could get all the, like, different emotions, but at the end of the day, what we're building is for tourists, not necessarily the manufacturing, but the whole entire complex. It is in harmony. Everything planned of what we have doing and going has to do with what they're speaking of and making this downtown area like a mecca of entertainment, restaurants, room, art, all that stuff. It's just one aspect of what we're trying to get permission to do in order to create jobs and to create just an industry of, obviously, that's already happening within the town and to give other people an opportunity to get into it that maybe can't.
Thank you, sir. Does any commissioner have any questions on any of the testimony that's been asked or presented this evening, this afternoon?
No. No.
Staff, do you have any?
I would just, I would just like to note the comments made regarding the application. We have followed the same process that we have with every other conditional use permit that has been, been presented to this commission, based on the public notification process. So that is the citizen participation report. There is a matrix within the community development department that has been designated timelines to which the documents are supposed to be in, within the file, and the citizen participation report allows a certain amount of time for the public to be able to comment on an article that has been publicly noticed, so I did want to clarify that. Thank you.
And one of the points that I did make, and I'm going to talk about it again, a lot of the comments, they're very valid, but they're for legislation as opposed to for the hearing for the most part. We've held meetings for well over a year. We started around about March or April of last year, and then we started to focus in on issues that should be changed in the code. And I'm wondering how many people have testified or given public input at any of the many planning and zoning commission meetings, because that's the basis for the changes that we proposed in the land use code. We took a lot of time. We had a final meeting when we passed over the revised code to the town council, where there was room for comment. And a few weeks before that, we did a joint meeting with the town council where there was opportunity for input. The town council held a meeting to adopt a new land use and zoning code. There was opportunity there. That is the point of legislation-- That is the point of legislative meetings. This is not a legislative meeting. Having said that, we've heard a lot of concerns. And in no way are those concerns being minimized. What they are, for the most part, certainly not all, for the most part, is food for the Planning and Zoning Commission, who is required by ordinance every January, starting with this coming January, to review concerns that the public or community development or the commission itself has found. And to slake from those and modify the code so that by the end of the year, there'll be an update to the town council. And that is where legislative activities occur. I've made a note of all the, the points that you've made. Some of them, we're going to have to debate. Some of them are legislative. A lot of them were repetitive. Our job is purely to filter out the facts, discuss any issues of concern with our attorney, and then take the facts and the legal concerns and compare them against the four findings. I and the other commissioners have no choice. The decision could be made by a computer. It is difficult for you, it's difficult for me. I thank you very much for your input. Are there any questions before I move to the next step? Any questions from staff? I would entertain a motion to go into executive session under NMSA 7810-15-1H3. Discussions will be limited solely to issues relating from this hearing and the preceding part of it on Tuesday. We're not allowed to go into other issues at all, and we can't use our own knowledge or some facts from you who have testified. During that executive session, no decisions could be made. When we come back from that executive session, I will ask each commissioner if that was a true statement, that we stuck to discussions purely relating to the sworn testimony we've heard, and of course, legal advice, and that we'd not make any decisions. Typically, during an executive session, we will ask questions about how do we phrase a motion? That's not a decision. It's up to the councillors and commissioners when we come back. So I move to go into executive session under the stated statute with those limitations. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and it's a second to go into executive session under NMSA 7810-15-1H3 with a limitation stated. Any debate? Hearing done, can we please do a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
We're now in recess. This typically takes 15 to 20 minutes. I would encourage you to please stay in the neighborhood. Calling the meeting back to the order. We will resume where we left off. We've come back from an executive session. And I am going to ask a question of all the commissioners. I'm reading a statement regarding the closed session that will be included in the minutes. After I finish reading this statement, I will ask the commission to approve the statement. The matter discussed in the closed session was limited only to the topic as stated in the agenda, and no action was taken during the closed session. This will be a roll call. Does the commission approve this statement? Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
Thank you, we will proceed. Is there any further discussion before I ask for a motion? I'm going to simplify it by, I'm going to read the motion and see if someone agrees to it, and then if somebody seconds it to it, and then we'll follow on from there. And just so everyone knows, motions are always made in the affirmative. Get the right glasses on. I move to approve Conditional Use 25-03, a conditional use permit to operator manufacturing class 1, 2, and 3, production and future retail cannabis within the historic downtown commercial district at the property addressed as 205 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, legally described as subdivision Fraser, block 69, lot 5 through lot 10, part of lot 5, part of lot 6, being 0.258 acres. So that's the motion. Does anyone wish to confirm that?
Yes.
Is, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any debate? I would like to offer some conditions, four to be precise. And this is based on listening to what everyone has said, concerns of the public, and also, of course, legal advice. If approved, the conditional use permit is limited to this applicant at this site only and is not transferable. The second is, this conditional use permit has a life of 12 months, after which the applicant must be renewed by proof of progress or licentious. Applicant number three, correction, condition number three. Applicant must implement best practices for odor mitigation. Number four, if the cannabis license is revoked, the conditional use permit automatically is revoked. Those are the conditions I'm suggesting we add. So I'd make that an amendment motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any debate?
As a point of information, the state authorities will be in charge of the licensing. And their requirements for the operation are much more stringent than any the city has, and they have a much better enforcement mechanism to enforce those standards, just so the folks know.
Thank you. I would ask staff, did you, were able to write down those four conditions?
Yes.
And I would ask if there's any legal concerns from council on those four conditions?
Not in the broad scope. I assume you'll allow me to write them out for you for the written decision?
Yes, this was the concept behind those conditions, and it needs to be fine-tuned and reviewed by, of course. Thank you. No further debate?
No.
In which case, we have a roll call for the motion to approve Conditional Use 25-03, a conditional use permit to operator manufacturing class 1, 2, and 3, production and future retail cannabis within the historic downtown commercial district at the property addressed as 205 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, legally described as subdivision Fraser, block 69, lot 5 through lot 10, part of lot 5, part of lot 6, being 0.25 acres, with four conditions as previously stated.
Commissioner Stone?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
Well, oh, yes.
Commissioner Bayless?
Yes.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. The effect is, there will be a time lag while community development develops the notice of decision. There is a timeline for that, which is, I believe, 15 days. And when that conditional use permit is mailed, the appeal timeline starts. And in order to appeal, one has to have, meet certain requirements. For example, financial involvement, proximity, and things like that. And I would ask you, should you wish to appeal, to contact the Director of Community Development, who will give you the specific details. When you do appeal, you also have to give the basis for the appeal.
Chairman, if I may?
Please.
It is 15 business days, just to clarify for the public.
I'm sorry, say again?
15 business days.
15 business days, thank you. And with that, this particular hearing is now closed. The next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit, 25-04, a request for a conditional use permit for the operation of a cannabis retail establishment. The property is addressed as, correction, at 306 Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The apelant is Katharina Gardea. This is a conditional use permit. It's the same rules as before. I would ask each commissioner, have you had any ex parte discussions, conflicts of interest or financial interests?
No. No.
I did read the thing on Facebook and then didn't read the comments that went with it.
Thank you. And as I mentioned before, I've had no shortage of emails or Facebook comments, and I've done the same thing. I forwarded them to community development to be printed out. I find that we do have a quorum, therefore we can proceed. The presiding officer will have sole discretion in directing questions. All communications must be directed through the chair. Presentations will be limited to three minutes. We will now swear in the staff, applicants, and the citizens who wish to speak. And each one will please need to sign the log sheet. And then I'd ask staff to give me the log sheet when you have that. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Blake Marley.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give before this commission.
That the testimony I'm about to give before this commission.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, but nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. And if you could please sign the log sheet, and I will call witnesses in the order they appear on the log sheet. Thank you. The new format is less cluttered, and I removed the bigger stuff. This, this reads... Do a good job when I'm no longer the chair.
Yeah, we can't let you down now. Jeez. So if a person gets a chance to talk, they won't be too mad at us. I was complaining about the people that kept coming back because they always had something else to say, but that was very kind and generous. You don't let them have their say. Then they can't come back and say, well, they...
So three minutes or three o'clock.
Well, I think the clock back in the other room was wrong, wasn't it? It's only 4:20.
Is there a back exit on this?
I know.
That's, there wasn't at the Alamo, and that's why.
Oh, yeah.
They lost.
There's a trap door. If you go out the back door, it sends off an alarm or something, you know? Or there is no door at all.
I'm sure there is.
Sure there is. Actually, we could turn to the other side.
I had lunch today at the women's club. And they had four women do a barber shop session. Stupid machine. There we go. Thank you.
Shorter. Today's Friday. I used to have fun on Fridays because of the Nigerian days.
Right.
Not so much anymore. Not so much anymore.
End of the week, a couple days off.
Yeah. The teachers, teachers always had to be so straight-laced during the week.
If I could ask staff, did we get any specific public input emails or texts or things like that?
Any input received is within the packet that the commission has before them.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to ask staff to present their case and include their recommendations.
CU twenty-five oh four. A conditional use permit for cannabis retail within the historic downtown commercial district at the property addressed as three oh six North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Legally described as subdivision Frazier Block ninety-one, Lot eight, zero point zero four three acres. The applicant is Katrina Gardia. Any cannabis retail within the historic within the historic downtown commercial district requires a conditional use permit per the Town of Silver City's Land Use and Zoning Code of two thousand and ten. Ms. Gardia submitted a conditional use application in, at the Community Development Department on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. If the applicant receives a conditional use permit, they may move forward with the cannabis zoning verification process and all applicable standards for the section three point three point one H of the Town of Silver City Land Use and Zoning Code of two thousand and ten shall apply. Cannabis retailer is defined in section three point three point one H one I as a person who sells cannabis products to qualified patients, primary caregivers, or reciprocal participants, or directly to consumers. Section three point three point one H two D, cannabis retail is allowed in the highway commercial zoning district and in the historic downtown commercial and in mixed-use zoning districts with a conditional use permit. After a departmental review of the application, the code enforcement, engineering, fire, police, public works, utilities, and meters department had no comment. As required by section six point two point eleven of the Land Use and Zoning Code of two thousand and ten, the Community Development Department contacted thirty-eight landowners identified by Grant County Assessor's parcel data by U.S. mail within three hundred feet of the project area. Of the thirty-eight landowners notified, two letters were returned, three letters, three were unable to forward. The Community Development Department received three responses, two in the form of a phone call and one in the form of a personal visit. Both phone calls and personal visit expressed their disapproval of the the proposal, as well as further clarification on the current rules and regulations currently enacted by town council and more information regarding the proposal. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall apply and make relevant all four of the following findings to the request at hand. One, it will not injure the public health or safety. Two, it will not injure the value of adjoining our nearby properties. Three, it will be in harmony with the area of which it is located. And four, it's in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan and other plans officially adopted by the town. The Community Development Department staff recommends that this request be approved as it meets all four findings as required.
Does any commissioner have any questions of staff? Does that complete your case in chief?
Yes, Chairman.
I would then ask the applicant to present your case, and you must state how the required findings are being met. And if you would state your name when you start, thank you.
Hello. Hello. Okay, it's on. First, is it okay if I bring these up too? It's the...
Your name?
Oh, Katrina Gardia, applicant. May I bring this to you?
Is it the same as the one that's already?
No, it is revised.
Okay, then please.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission Board, Chairman, staff, and fellow citizens. Our names are Katrina Elisea Gardia. Sorry, a little nervous. We are here today representing Mary J. Lane LLC. We applied for a conditional use permit to establish a licensed cannabis retail location within the historic, historical district. First, I want to say that thank you to Emily and Jackie and Maria for helping us with the application and the process. We appreciate the committee's time and dedication to the development process in Silver City. However, we must formally register our objection regarding the testimony presented during the December second meeting. We understand there have been concerns raised, particularly referencing a past business operation downtown, formerly known as Grateful Living Cannabis. We need to clearly distinguish our proposal from that situation. During the hearing, a significant portion of the public testimony focused on the past operations of a completely separate entity, Grateful Living LLC, a hemp business that formerly occupied the facility intended for our use. The public complaint centered on the business's utilization of hemp loopholes to operate within the historical commercial district zone. We want to state clearly for the record that our proposed retail cannabis business is a completely separate and independent entity from Grateful Living LLC. We have no affiliation with them, and we have never met nor communicated with anyone from that organization. The public testimony regarding the chaos and operations of Grateful Living LLC is irrelevant and should not be validated in the consideration of our conditional use permit. The previous business, by all accounts, was operating legally under existing hemp regulations at the time. It was not a licensed cannabis business. The hemp industry often operates within legal loophole areas. This distinction is crucial. As a licensed cannabis business, we operate under a strict and heavily regulated framework set by the state. These are hard rules we are legally bound to follow. Any violations may result in heavy fines or revocation of our state license. Our entire investment depends on a hundred percent compliance with all state regulations, including age restrictions, meaning any product diversion to minors is a risk we simply will not tolerate. Sorry, I lost my spot. We are concerned that the committee will use the testimonies and negative associations stemming from Grateful Living LLC as a basis for judging our application. This would fundamentally be unfair, as we should be evaluated based on our merits, our comprehensive application, and our commitment to operating within all city ordinances, particularly since the city voted to remove all forms of cannabis operations from the HCD zone as of October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Following this logic, the past legal operation of Grateful Living LLC, regardless of public dissatisfaction, should not be held against our unrelated business application. We respectfully request that the committee disregard any testimony specifically focused on the past activities of Grateful Living LLC, as it is based on prejudice against a separate business and not on the merits of our application. Our business is committed to being a responsible and compliant member of the Silver City business community. We urge the committee to evaluate our application strictly based on the criteria for a conditional use permit and the zoning regulations that were in place at the time of our formal submission of our application. We understand that the commission's primary duty is to ensure the integrity and welfare of the community. In presenting our application, we affirm that our commitment to meeting all necessary standards for approval, we pledge that our operation will not endanger public health or safety through strict protocols, will not injure value or adjoining or nearby properties, will be in aesthetic and operational harmony with the district, and aligns with the town's comprehensive plan for economic growth. Criterion one, health and safety. Our commitment to public health, safety, and welfare is paramount and serves as the foundation for our operations, ensuring community compatibility and compliance with our conditional use permit requirements. Key policies and security measures established for this criterion include: Advanced security and surveillance. We maintain twenty-four seven video surveillance covering all internal areas, entrances, and the immediate perimeter of the facility. This system, coupled with strict access control protocols, ensures that only authorized personnel and verified customers can enter, providing a secure and monitored environment at all times. Strict age verification and compliance. We enforce a strict age verification process requiring valid identification from every customer, regardless of apparent age, to prevent access to minors and ensure full compliance with all statutory regulations. Zero tolerance consumption policy. We maintain a zero tolerance policy against the consumption of any regulated substances on our premises, ensuring a safe, professional atmosphere and preventing potential nuisance behavior both inside the facility and within the immediate vicinity. Commitment to non-smoking perimeter. We actively enforce our right to refuse service policy for anyone reported smoking within twenty-five feet of the front entrance of the building. This measure is vital for protecting public health by eliminating second-hand smoke exposure at entry points and supporting the general welfare of the community. Criterion two, property value. Our specific operational policies ensure that the economic benefits are not offset by negative externalities, thereby preserving the neighborhood's quality of life and consequently its property values. By prioritizing a quick grab-and-go model to manage traffic and use prepackaged airtight products for complete odor mitigation, we eliminate the primary nuisance concerns that could negatively impact neighborhood satisfaction and home value. Our commitment to a professional atmosphere and twenty-four seven surveillance ensures the location does not contribute to disorder or crime, which are the only factors proven to negatively affect property values. Criterion three, harmony with the area. In direct support of the harmony criteria required for our conditional use permit, we are implementing a robust framework of operational policies designed to ensure our presence contributes positively to the area. These measures include strict protocols for handling external disruptions and illegal activity, a revised alcohol and drug-free policy that explicitly addresses nuisance behavior, and enforcement of a twenty-five-foot setback for smoking under our right to refuse service policy. To ensure a professional atmosphere and mitigate common concerns, we are employing discreet, non-obtrusive external signage. Crucially, our proposed operation is strictly retail. We are not growing or manufacturing on this site. Our odor mitigation strategy is guaranteed by sourcing all prepackaged, all products prepackaged in compliant, airtight, and child-resistant containers before they enter the business, ensuring that the smell of cannabis will not be a problem. Furthermore, our comprehensive traffic management plan is designed around a quick grab-and-go transaction model to ensure low customer dwell time, which proactively presents us from overburdening the existing street parking used by neighboring businesses. Criterion four, conformity with the plan. Silver City has already made a minimum of two hundred thousand in state allocated cannabis excise tax revenue based on its confirmed sales of over five million through early twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, plus its full share of the local gross receipts tax on all those sales. This demonstrates a real local economic engine at work, all in which can be reinvested directly into local services. Beyond taxes, our local business acts as a retail anchor, drawing a new consumer demographic. Bringing, bringing this commerce into a monitored retail environment is the most responsible way for a modern tourist town to handle a thriving legal industry. Our goal is to eventually invest back into our community. We are putting our belief in Silver City's future right where our roots are. Before I address a few community concerns, I just want to state that one of the concerns of the community was the saturation of cannabis businesses in Silver City. The Community Development Staff reported thirteen scattered amongst our city. There are a minimum of nineteen registered art galleries in the historic district alone. And before I upset anyone, yes, I understand that it is an art district, and yes, most of the current cannabis companies carry the same products, so you can get your product anywhere else. But why in the historic district? There are a thousand nine hundred and seventy-five producers and manufacturers in the state of New Mexico, and our mission is to distinguish ourselves by carrying products that none of these thirteen dispensaries have, giving the community more of a selection that can only be found within the historical district, constantly evolving. Aside from that, our proposed retail operation is dedicated to being a responsible neighbor, and we have implemented comprehensive policies to address all community concerns proactively. Our commitment is focused on our four core areas. One, scope of operation, which is retail only. We want to clearly state that our facility is strictly limited to retail sales of prepackaged products. There will be absolutely no manufacturing, cultivation, or onsite production conducted at this location. Two, strict odor and environmental control. We guarantee effective odor mitigation through a multi-layered approach. All products are stored in hermetically sealed, scent-proof containers. Critically, we will utilize a commercial-grade HVAC system equipped with activated carbon filtration that continuously scrubs and neutralizes all air before it leaves the building, ensuring a zero detectable odor footprint. Also being that we are retail only, we do not use a daily-style service which distinguishes our cannabis establishment from the rest. Three, public conduct and nuisance prevention. We enforce a strict zero tolerance policy for onsite consumption and smoking. Zero consumption. Consumption of any product on the premises, inside or outside, is strictly prohibited. Non-smoking perimeter. We commit to maintaining a non-smoking perimeter around the facility to prevent public nuisance and loitering. Noise and loitering. Our strict in-and-out policy and active security monitoring will prevent loitering, congregation, and loud noise, ensuring a quiet environment for our neighbors. Preventing, four, preventing sales to minors. We employ a rigorous two-tiered ID verification protocol. Every customer must present a valid government ID issued ID upon entry, and the same ID is scanned and verified again electronically at the point of sale. This strict protocol ensures compliance with all legal age requirements. We are confident that these professional standards and robust protocols will ensure a safe, quiet, and discreet operation. In summary, we are seeking your approval under the previous ordinance in effect when we submitted our application. Our proposal for the historical district is strictly retail, with no manufacturing or production. We have proactively mitigated all community concerns, ensuring zero odor through prepackaged, smell-proof products and specialized HVAC, and updating our policies and procedures to ensure the health and safety for the community. We commit to the highest standards of safety, enforcing a two-point ID check and maintaining strict, law-mandated control over noise and loitering. We are committed to investing in a historical facade restoration that will enhance property values and prove that Mary J. Lane can be a valuable, compliant, and harmonious business within the community. We had a clear demonstration of meeting all four CUP safety and harmony criteria. We respectfully request your approval of our conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Would I be correct that there's no substantial change from the previous packet that you submitted, which you added clarifications regarding other businesses?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions for the applicant?
Do you have another enterprise in another city similar to this one?
No. So we, we had a cannabis business in Las Cruces, but we are hoping to relocate.
Okay. And in your former business, did you ever have any encounters with law enforcement? Or have your license revoked by the state authority?
No, sir.
Commissioner Looney?
No, I don't think I have any questions.
Commissioner Stone?
Just a side issue. Where, can you, do you know where the source of your prepackaged, hermetically sealed product comes from? Is it grown in New Mexico, or?
So, yes, it's, it's all out of New Mexico, being that it is only in... being that it is only in-state. But all of our products come from other companies. And part of, of, I don't know, I guess cannabis law, you have to have it sealed in a childproof container. And being that we are retail, we cannot manufacture or anything. It has to be in a package.
Thank you.
Yeah. Bend up. Parking is always an issue in that vicinity. So you talked about your quick grab-and-go transaction model that probably would maybe ameliorate some of that parking issue because the people won't be there very long. But how does that work?
So, we're hoping. Because downtown, the way everybody parks and everything, there are actually, we've spoken about this, me and my husband, there's people that park in front of businesses that may not even be at that business. But we're hoping that anybody that comes to our store or parks maybe directly or across or in any of the other, in front of the other businesses, we're hoping that it'll be quick because they'll come in, they'll grab what they need, and they'll go. But...
So compared to other dispensaries in the city?
And you also?
My name is Eliseo Gardea. I'm the other applicant with my wife. So, all the other dispensaries have a DALL-E-style service, so customers could go in and they could smell every single cannabis or flower that they have available for sale. In our case, that's not going to be the case. It's going to be all prepackaged. So when they come in, they're either going to see the menu online and already have an idea of what they're going to purchase. So there's not going to be any jars being open or exposed to the air to where customers are going to overstay. And pretty much, I take, I mean, whenever I go into a dispensary, I smell every single jar that they have on their shelves just to kind of get a sample for the terpenes inside that flower. That's not going to be our, in our situation, that's not the case. Everything's going to be prepackaged and ready to go, and we're also going to have a website up. So when they do come in, most of the customers are already going to screen through our website to see what type of product we have, and they're going to come in with an idea and just purchase and go.
Now, excuse me. Were you sworn in?
I was sworn in, yes.
As I was looking for your name on the sheet.
He's right above my name. His handwriting is a little crazy.
Yeah, I can't read the one that is here.
It's the one right above my name.
Did you list an address of 400 North Bullard?
Uh, yes.
It's 306 Bullard Street.
Okay. And do you recall swearing in? If I could ask stuff.
I'm sorry, Chairman. I was at the front of the group, so I don't recall.
Okay. Yeah, the first one I can read is, looks like a Carol something or other from 400 North Bullard.
Would you like me to point out his name on the paper?
There's no name above it.
No, my name is down at the bottom, where I signed my name, Katrina Gardea. His is directly above mine, Eliseo Gardea.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, so when you mentioned that you're going to have products that the others don't offer, that's because yours are packaged differently?
Well, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have product of our own because we're retail. We're not manufacturing or production.
So we're going to source our product from a lot of different manufacturers and producers in the state, which, what was the number again? There's a lot. There's over a thousand of them. When we visit these dispensaries in town, I mean, they don't carry more than 20 brands in their store. You know, there's a lot more brands out there that we can bring into our facility that necessarily doesn't have to be the local brands that Las Cruces carries, or Silver City, or even Dammie. I mean, New Mexico granted a lot of licenses, especially for microproducers, and then, of course, for all the manufacturing companies that are out there. And that's not even to say companies that come in and make brand deals with these manufacturing companies. So just the licenses alone, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot more brands than the licenses alone just because there's third parties that come out from different states that may have a brand that might link to a manufacturing company in the state to be able to sell their brand in New Mexico and not necessarily carry a license to manufacture themselves. So there's a lot of options out there, and we've visited every single dispensary in Silver City, and we have an idea of which brands we're going to bring in. And it's going to take a lot of scavenging through New Mexico and visiting farms and visiting manufacturing facilities, but that'll give us enough time to finish our layout in our building, all the fresh paint, texture, and everything that we've got to do before we even place our first order.
We really, we really just want to give everybody a chance that's within the state to bring it into our dispensary.
You mentioned in your verbiage there that there was something about your roots. So you had lived in Las Cruces, and now you're going to move here?
So, no. I am born and raised here. But my husband, I met him in Las Cruces, and I was going back and forth from here to there, but I remained here.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody, do you have any questions? Commissioner Stone?
No.
Any others? Okay. Does that complete your case in chief?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the list, we will do public testimony. And first name, looks like Carol from 400 North Bullard. And we have a three-minute time, and I'll hold my hand up so that you can pace yourself. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to address several facts. I'm Carol Chuko. That the, I want to make on record, the citizen testimony is now being limited without equal limit to the applicant time. The notice did not specify, and this happened when you read it out, 306 North or South Bullard, limiting participation by concerned citizens. You may not have been aware, it was North Bullard. There is a fact record in our town police records of an increase in police visits to 306 North Bullard due to open smoking that is illegal, and it is an after-the-fact attempt to control that, no matter what an applicant says. Fact, the location does not meet the legal code for distance from youth education, which occurs nearby. Another fact, do not see any documentation by the applicant or town staff that it indeed does meet this legal requirement. Number, another fact, the applicants recently made statements in public about that they wanted to appeal to bring youth, and that was the word that was used, quote-unquote, downtown. And fact, the definition of youth is under 18. Someone over 18 is an adult and legal to vote and legal to consume or buy. Fact, the two locations that were spoken of by the town staff and by applicants in general to justify Harmony findings are not structures, butting adjacent structures. Old Post Office and Pope Street have quite a bit of separation and open air, so it's a different physical setup. Fact, the total number of cannabis operations statistically, historically, does have a direct impact on property values. Fact, I plan to file an appeal for property assessed value reduction and expect many other property owners in the affected areas to file similar appeals for reduced property values. And thus, whatever tax benefits there may be from having, being known as Weed Town and having 13 to 15 pot operations are offset by a reduction in cumulative current and future property values for not just the historical downtown, but for all people who own property in this town limits of Silver City, and a case could be made for even in the county. And so, my concern with the previous one being approved and this one being approved is that I have not seen time to actually hunt down facts that citizens have been presented. I feel like many of the facts that citizens have presented have actually just been outright ignored in this whole process. And it was not, it was not properly noticed, inaccurate statements have made. There is not adequate enforcement regardless of promises that are made.
Thank you. I would next like to ask Wendy Raven Phillips to come forward.
Wendy Raven Phillips, 405 North Bullard. I'd like to hand this in for this part of the hearing. It's the same one that I gave you the last time. Formal objection. So, gosh. I'm just going to breeze through this really quick because you guys know what it says. But the chapter 22, Article 2 expressly provides that any kind of smell is a health hazard.
Can you speak close to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. That the ordinances, Chapter 32 defines public nuisance as conditions that endanger the health of others, which the town has stipulated in a lot of its ordinances that it agrees on. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this because I want to speak to this group. But it's basically ordinances 1173 and 1230 established at the historic downtown district require protections for historic character, pedestrian environment, tourism, adjacent buildings, public health and welfare. So I'll hand that in for your consideration. But I do want to say that I'm very satisfied with the conditions that you gave Anthony's business. I think that it's obvious that our staff supports this kind of stuff downtown and that the commissioners don't believe that we can decline them. So given that, even though I agree with everything that's said here against cannabis shops in the historic downtown area, I've spoken, I think if we can give them the same conditions, no consumption, that they can't transfer to, like if they bought Bobby's building and their business failed, that CUP can't be taken by Bobby and have somebody else come in that isn't going to have as much integrity. Those are things that would be important to me to be consistent with them. And then also that I wanted to say something about this young couple. I'm a big believer in entrepreneurship. I'm a big believer in giving, you know, young kids a chance. I met them and their family, their kids. I think that they're honest people as I do believe that Anthony's family has integrity also in their perspective. I think that as long as you've passed Anthony's business that you should probably consider these kids. I do believe that they, I mean, everything they seem to read on the internet, they took care of, they whitewashed the building because people didn't like the way the building was painted. They've shown me pictures of how they're going to, you know, advertise, and it's very, it fits very much into the character of the town. So I'm split, obviously, but I do want to say that I think they should be given a chance because your staff here seems to think that they should be given a chance.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Moody, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Stone? Commissioner Bayless?
No.
And staff? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Wendy. The next person I would call is Marshall Sue Lustig. And I'll raise my hand when we get close to three minutes.
Okay. It won't take that, I promise. Marshall Sue Lustig, Silver City. I just wanted to make sure that my comments from before that are applicable to retail or consumption in a downtown and the effect on the merchants and the real estate next to it would carry from my last comments. And otherwise, I won't say anything. Can I use those comments from before?
It would be difficult to do. Could you please summarize the key points? Thank you.
So the main concerns are that businesses often next to, or commonly next to cannabis businesses are cannabis-related businesses. That's who wants to be there. And we are becoming Weed Town, unfortunately, even in the downtown. And so, that's why I oppose this, although I don't see how you could turn it down after you approved this other one. I do think there are also comments about when the application was actually complete, but that'll be covered later by others. Again, I just think this is really hard on the merchants downtown, and they put a lot of effort into making a thriving downtown and, you know, comparing art stores, galleries to overuse of, you know, too many weed shops is not, they're not consistent, obviously, and I think you know that. So that's it. My comments are about what's happening, the changes that are going to occur to the downtown, and we'll all get to see that, I think, in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would now like to call Barbara Bush.
Hello. Thank you for all that you guys do. I know that you don't have easy jobs here. I'd first like to make just a couple of personal comments. And that is, that, one, I'm very disappointed that I have not seen the director of our Main Street here. I just wanted to note that for a public comment, seeing as though this has to do with that. Secondly, I'm very discouraged in the town for the last decision. But, oh, I forgot. Okay, those are my personal comments. Well, no, I have one more. I just, I want to say that I think that Katrina's plan is very intelligent, well-thought-out. But I just, as with the other pot shops that are downtown or going to be, I don't think that's the place for them. And here's why. Business planning is supposed to focus on revitalizing its historic core through the city Main Street program. So maintaining that historic core, which is often based on family values. I don't know that this, this new trend really encapsulates that. And then, from the town report, we have the official statement is, "The number-one thing is supporting and valuing efforts to protect and maintain our historic downtown and traditional neighborhoods." And I just have to wonder, you know, we can call it historic, but how long is it going to have quaint shops? How long is it going to, you know, be family-friendly? And how is that going to affect the neighborhoods around it? So that's really what I just wanted to say today. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Dearest, do you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Stone? Thank you very much. I would like to call Blake Farley next.
Thank you.
I've asked Jenny to be my mannequin and hold a poster up. Quick. All right. My name's Blake. I'm real estate. This is about real estate. So the fastest way I can tell you is I want to talk about the two properties next to the property that the applicant has made the application for. Number one, yes, it was, it was, it was an art gallery when number two and number three, 304- When number two and number three, 304 and 302 North Bullard, both of those properties sold in 2022, when 306 was an art gallery. After the bad seed, Grateful Living People, and we know we don't want to paint the applicants with the same brush, that's not fair. But we do have some real estate statistics. And the only thing I want to say about that is the public doesn't necessarily understand between the perception of a cannabis business and hemp business. And I did give you some material showing that when number two and three were purchased in 2022, the days on the market were shorter and they sold more for what the asking price is now. So I had to write up all the stuff on my exhibits because it was stuff I was going to talk about and now I can't talk about it as much. So now, number two, which was Rebel Restaurant, also was the Wise Woman Collective. It's back on the market since early 2024. It has 472 days on the market and now the asking price is less than what the previous owners, than what the previous price was. Number three has been on the market for 624 days and it started off at a $425,000 asking price and now it's asking $395,000. And what's interesting about that is since 306 is vacant, we were able to find a buyer for number three, 302. So 302 is now under contract with the buyer. And going through my presentation, I realized that that buyer had not been disclosed to. So we had to call the buyer yesterday and disclose just the application itself, triggered an adverse material fact. So we had to let the buyer know what was going on, how we were having to come to the planning and zoning meeting, how, because of course they didn't get the letter because they're buyers, they're not the sellers, right? So we had to disclose to them. They immediately expressed concern. They wrote Commissioner Wheaton Smith an email. They immediately contacted Counselor Snyder. They expressed their concern. I do have a copy of the email that they sent. And now I'm in a position where if this is approved, I have to disclose to them in writing that the conditional use permit is disclosed. That being the case, once they get that disclosure, they can terminate the transaction or they can ask to reduce the price based on this. So I just want to point out that, I just want to ask you, if we were able to get 302 under contract with 306 being vacant. So when this, if this gets approved, how is this going to impact? Is this going to hurt? Is it going to hurt the sale of 302? Is it going to hurt the pricing of 304? Or is it going to help? And that I leave up to you.
Yes, we can't answer those questions because you're providing testimony.
Would you like my testimony? My testimony is that it will hurt. That's my professional opinion.
And on my time, we're, we've got past the three minutes by minute. On my time, could you please read that email that you referenced? Because it was a late email. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for allowing me to read it. I'm not going to read the names because, just for the sake of discretion. Although I do want to tell you that I spoke with the buyer and they do know that I'm speaking tonight about the property. If I didn't have their permission, I would not. So, good day. I'm hoping that you received this email before the meeting scheduled for tomorrow. In regards to a business license application for two cannabis based retail businesses in the historic district, my wife, her name, and I will be closing our purchase of the property at 302 North Bullard Street on Thursday, December 11th, 2025. We intend our use of this property to be our primary residence. We understand that the property is zoned in the historic district and can be used for commercial purposes. We are opposed to allowing cannabis adult only businesses in the historic district and support the recent amendment of ordinance 1174. Our reasoning is simple. We do not support adult only businesses operating in the historic district of the city. The environment of this part of Silver City is unique, parts, architecture, and the overall orientation of this space for people of all ages. Adult only businesses are a bad quote fit, end quote, in the historic district. We would support commercial ventures that add value to the historic nature of the district, being a place for people of all ages to enjoy. For example, we would also be opposed to businesses sold only alcohol or cigarettes to those of legal age. We would have no issue with the sale or use of cannabis in a safe and legal manner. This district is very unique and maintaining it as a place for people of all ages to enjoy is important to us. We are against acceptance of the two applications. And then there's a response from Counselor Snyder, if you'd like me to read it.
If you would.
Thank you for your input. And this was last-
This is here safe at this point, but it may be useful.
I have it in writing. So, and it was, and I can tell you the timestamps and everything. So the letter was sent from our clients, December 4th, 2025, at 1:14 PM, right after we made the written disclosure to them and a phone call to them because I had to alert them of what was happening. And then the letter response to the clients, to the buyers, was at December 4th, 2025, at 5:36 PM. Thank you for your input. There is definite character of downtown that needs to be preserved. Stan, District 3 Counselor.
Thank you.
Would you like the copy of the letter?
I believe it'd be a good idea to give it to staff.
Okay.
I would point out that the letter came from someone that we really couldn't cross examine. And also the first letter was, we can't cross examine it. So that is, should be considered as public input rather than as testimony.
Well, especially, especially since they were just disclosed to and found out about the issue yesterday.
Yeah. I understand that. That's why I asked you to read it in.
I really appreciate that.
Thank you. The next person on the list would be Michael.
Can I just say a comment referring to what she just said?
Can you please sit down? You are who, sir? Michael Metcalfe, if you'd be so good. Thank you.
The town councilors support our community, families, children, and tourists, as they've stated many times. This is, this is not a cannabis issue, but a location issue. New Mexico state guidelines from the cannabis legislation limit the location of cannabis establishments as determined by local jurisdiction, but which distance shall be 300 feet or more from the perimeter of many types of public uses, including youth centers and public parks. The 306 Bullard property is located within 300 feet of the town owned Big Ditch Park, as well as the parklet on Texas and Yankee Street. Also within 300 feet of the 306 Bullard property is the Virus Theater that operates the El Sol Theater, that operates in the El Sol Theater as a youth center with many children involved in workshops and productions annually. Since the town has demonstrated issues enforcing infractions in the past, if conditional use permit is granted today, it should only be for a limited duration. The town should consider creating an amortization clause for nonconforming uses in the historic downtown district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would now like to ask Kitty Catherine Clemens, if you'd be so kind, kind enough to go forward.
It's almost good evening, I guess. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I never get to come to these meetings because they're always on Tuesday and I'm usually teaching. So it's nice to have the opportunity to say something in person. By way of introduction, I'd just like to say that I am a graduate of the Place Management Institute from International Downtown Association. I'm also certified as a sustainable tourism destination management professional. So my comments today are really based on 20 years of experience as a destination marketing and management professional. Historic Main Streets thrive on a specific mix of uses that create vibrancy and draw visitors. They sustain small businesses. And when the storefronts shift away from retail, dining, and entertainment, the district's economic base weakens. So I believe that if we can say that the economic base can weaken because we don't have specialty retail, dining, and entertainment type businesses occupying our storefronts on the street level, we are not in harmony as part of your plans. You also have a metro redevelopment plan, an arts and culture plan, and a downtown action plan. All of those plans were developed before cannabis was legal. So it's very difficult for someone who wants to speak to whether this conditional use permit is in the public's best interest and in compliance with your plans because the plans were developed before pot was legalized. For that reason, I am here today to urge you to vote no on the expansion of any more dispensaries in the historic shopping and dining district. The economic strength of our historic shopping and dining district really depends on a no vote. Over the past three years, I've noticed many non-retail businesses occupying storefronts. We even now have a storefront church. Having a storefront church has been proven by research by Oxford Economics and the International Downtown Association to be an indicator that businesses are not healthy in a historic shopping and dining district. Therefore, again, I urge you to vote no on the expansion of any more dispensaries. There is a good place for a dispensary. I'm not opposed to dispensaries. They can thrive in many conditions. They can thrive outside of the historic shopping and dining district. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would like to ask Jennifer Olson next.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Olson. And while he's not present or sworn in, I also represent my husband Brent. For the record, he and by extension, we, we're involved in developing the 2025 zoning and land use code. And I have a couple of questions, but maybe at the end they could be directed appropriately. First, I want to emphasize the possibility for the applicants to open outside of the commercial historic district. Data regarding the impact of a cannabis dispensary moving into a neighborhood shows mixed results, admittedly. Some evidence does point to a negative impact of dispensaries on public health, safety, and property values. Bans on storefront retail and other restrictive approaches to regulating recreational cannabis may be associated with fewer harmful cannabis exposures for some age groups. One study found that localities that banned retail businesses had 18% fewer harmful cannabis exposures for children aged 12 and under. One table I saw showed that 7,906 harmful cannabis exposures were reported to the California Poison Control System over the study period. And this study linked 97% of their originating locality. Although I own four multifamily properties and one commercial building in and near downtown, I'm not a real estate expert. Blake spoke to the commercial side of things. But research from Washington State found that statistically, well, they found statistically negative effects on residential property values. Home prices within a three and four tenths of a mile radius of a new dispensary had fallen by three to four percent on average. Although notorious for tolerating almost any kind of usually discouraged activity, Amsterdam again looked into investigating whether it could ban takeaway sales of cannabis during certain hours between 4:00 PM and 1:00 AM from Thursday through Sunday nights. This was after the city forbade, forbid, is that the right tense? Smoking cannabis in public in the inner city in 2023. Okay. One commissioner recently stated that the state has a much better enforcement mechanism for these types of businesses. And it's true, the historic law of enforcement in the town of Silver City would predict the conditions on a new conditional use permit would be enforced unreliably. Sorry, I'm done. I'm not done, but I'll stop talking.
Yes, you've gone over significantly. Thank you.
Okay. No questions then?
Any questions?
Well, I mean, am I allowed to?
Any questions for David Stone? No, you are presenting testimony.
Okay.
And questions would not be testimony. They might be cross examination or something like that. But I very much appreciate it. Thank you. I'd like next to call Mary Reagans.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and staff, I am Mary Reagans and I acknowledge that I am a disappointed resident of Silver City. I'm also an active supporter of downtown merchants and wider community. I object to the CUP requests as it conflicts with the Planning and Zoning Commission Criteria finding three and four. My objection is not based on any bias against the applicant or cannabis users, but rather, like many of us, the location. I also want to say that I believe I'm the only person in the room that took the time during your recess to speak directly with the applicants. I understand their proposal. I'm disappointed that the proposal you're reviewing tonight was a revision to what was submitted to the town as it didn't, I don't believe, give the town the opportunity to review it thoroughly. The town's comprehensive plan states protecting Silver City's character and promoting local but livable neighborhoods and districts is a guiding principle in reviewing proposed actions by the town and its governing commissions. PZ and Council October meetings reinforced the preserving of Silver City's aesthetics and further through the adoption of their revision to the land use code amendment that you all submitted forward. Aesthetics of Silver City's character has been extolled for decades. Preserving Silver's historic character retains residence, attracts visitors, and creates a strong sense of community for posting activities and events. The town espouses this in its adopted documents that guide private and public development. Downtown historic commercial areas define a community's character defining front porch, establishes its public face. Silver embraces its front porch and leverages much from its New Mexico Main Street and New Mexico Alt Carter District designations that laud its downtown in its current condition. Land use and each district ordinances support its economic and social vitality in alignment with the comprehensive plan, fostering a walkable, inviting downtown where people can linger, shop, and socialize towards maintaining a vibrant, family-friendly, economically strong downtown. Cannabis establishments undermine this comp plan, keeping people from spending time downtown due to concerns about potential behaviors of some cannabis users or discomfort from cannabis odors and secondhand smoke. If approved, this establishment will augment the concerns stated and exist less than 250 feet from the previously approved establishment in this meeting. The CUP fails to protect community character or support Silver's social vitality, making it inconsistent with the comp plan and violating PC Criteria number four. The CU request doesn't meet Criteria three, which requires harmony in the area in which it is located. Harmony provides a pleasing arrangement of parts, congruence, agreement, and accord. Harmony does not happen by approving cannabis uses on our community's historic front porch. Public testimony here reflects that discord. You're creating additional by a potential approval of this event, of this application. Pointing to other similar downtown businesses is not a convincing argument for harmony. It depends on their application timeframe, depending upon that. They would have needed a CUP as well and are prohibited under ordinance today. They exist in a tolerated, nonconforming use and should not be a benchmark to weigh a new proposal against. a new proposal against. The remaining of my comments, actually, I'm going to alter based on the conversation that I had with the applicant in the room today. I'm not going to speak directly to the application. I'm going to back out of that. I am going to speak to the issues of this application, though I'm not going to speak on the terms that I had prepared. I believe it's important that this commission take the time in the future to clearly look and give direction to staff, and maybe it's as in the context of our chair being the incumbent mayor, to really analyze the process that the people that apply for these applications follow. Even the applicant in front of you today was confused. The applicant in front of you today was not informed by staff of the pending ordinance amendments that resulted in these kinds of establishments being prohibited now in the downtown under the new law. I have concerns for that as a public system citizen. I have concerns for that for transparency. The other issue I had that I'm not going to go into in detail has to do with the fact that there are many areas of the zoning, planning, and zoning code today that define physical constraints in establishments relating to cannabis. One could argue that those issues are not a matter for this commission. However, that they exist in the planning and land use code does make it an issue for the planning department and this commission. So I guess what I'm asking is for the chair to make some notes, and as he moves forward into his next position, to take seriously my request to look at the processes and the language of the existing code. If it's not within the planning commission department or commission's authority to regulate physical needs and criteria in a cannabis establishment, HVAC, self-closing door, then look at the code that you just amended and put those requirements in a location in the ordinance where the appropriate staff are required to enforce them. Right now, they sit in your ordinance that you all are required to enforce.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would next like to, any cross-examination of questions?
No.
Andy, David? Okay. Thank you. I would like next to call Cecilia Mennickel.
Okay. Okie dokie. I'm Cecilia, and I'm in opposition to having any more cannabis operations in the historic district. I ran my own shop down there for a while. I work at Century 21, Haas and De Vilte. I'm downtown every day, and I know the difference between what it was like before and what it's turning into today. So that's a fact. It's different, and a lot of people know it. And some of the old timers that I talk to say they don't even come downtown anymore because of the change. They don't feel comfortable. I could name people, but I won't, but there are people that have been in business here or have lived here for a long time. So I don't think this type of use is needed in the historic district. And I agree with your new rules that you're going to be moving forward, but I understand that you're having to take a look at the applications that are before you now because of procedural, procedural rules. But I still don't think that these type of uses should be allowed. I encourage the application of the amortization tool in land planning, because once you get a cannabis operation or any other non-conforming use, it's going to be very difficult to remove it. It's not, it's going to be a big upset, not only to the people who had the non-conforming use that were permitted, and then now they have to, like, regroup and move somewhere else. That's hard on a business. So I think being short-sighted and letting them in on these kind of short-term conditional things isn't really fair to anybody. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to the people that have to accept it. So look to Colorado. I mean, they were some of the first people to have to deal with these situations, and they are now having to, you know, realize their earlier errors. And they've, they've had to pull these cannabis operations out of many, many towns. I mentioned it in my last presentation. No need to go back over and list all those, but Estes Park is one that used the amortization tool, and the other ones are asking those cannabis operations to move more than one mile outside the tourist district. So my point being is that Colorado is already recognizing that these areas that are tourist destinations and, you know, historic districts really are not turning out to be such a great fit for these non-conforming uses, and they've had to back up and upset the apple cart for a lot of people, and I don't see why we have to follow in those kind of footsteps. We've got examples from our neighbors right next door that tell you this isn't a good idea. So I just respectfully request that you deny this application for another cannabis operation in the downtown historic district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Questions? Thank you very much. I would next like to ask the Laura of 413 North. Laura, thank you.
I do have a little handout here, if I may be able to pass that out.
And do you have a copy also for staff?
I do, I think.
Thank you.
Ooh, I think I do exactly.
Laura, want me to do it for you, then we can keep moving?
Chairman, I only have one of these. It's supposed to everybody.
Yep, yep. Okay. I have a little pet boutique downtown. That is my livelihood. This is a case of the big guys pushing the little guys out. The topic is already affecting my business, as I had to close the store today since I cannot afford to hire any employees. If these establishments affect my four-to-one tourism, I will be forced to close, and that will be devastating. Thank you. Number one, I asked that the address, is it, if it is just improper on the agenda, or is it improper on the request for the CUP? Because it is supposed to be North Bullard and not just Bullard. Silver City has a buffering zone of 300 feet from schools and the like. 300 feet meeting the statue of the NMSA 7826-2C-12. Although the statue lists specifically school, the purpose of the buffer is to protect minors from cannabis exposure. A youth program that regularly hosts minors serves the same functionality, deserves the same protection under the, for the purpose of the statute. A youth mural program is located at 315 North Bullard and is only 13 feet away from 306 North Bullard Street. Youth programs provide routine care, supervision, and an educational support for minors, functionality identical to a school or after-school program. For the town to treat this program differently would be inconsistent with the purpose of the statute, a misapplication of the ordinance, and a decision that would not withstand judicial review. The record must reflect that this youth program meets the functional criteria of a protected youth-serving facility. NMSA 26-2C-12 uses the term "school" without limiting it to a physical campus. Nothing in the Act limits protection to a school's physical campus. A youth program clearly falls within the educational mission of a school. Allowing a cannabis facility next to a youth program undermines the town's obligation to protect cultural and youth-centered uses in the historic district. And I would have said the same thing before, but I didn't understand that I couldn't speak if I wasn't sworn in. So I, yeah, so anyway, just letting you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of things. There was a gentleman who wanted to speak, but Michael Metcalf was next. Is that gentleman still wishing to speak? And you are sworn in?
Yes, I'm sworn in.
Thank you. And your name is?
Eliseo Garda.
Thank you.
And it was just going to be about the property value on the email she read. On the email she read, the buyer's not asking for a reduction in price, so it doesn't affect the property value. I mean, we're looking into buying property ourselves downtown, and I doubt that they're going to change that price because a dispensary is down the street. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. The, this question is for Mary Reagan, two speakers back. You commented on the revised plan. Could you elucidate on the revised plan, which the applicant says didn't have any substantive changes, but as I recall, merely expanded on explanations? Thank you.
So, sure, Mr. Chair. My sense of what was submitted in the application, having reviewed it, was that that application was not substantive. I saw it. And so my suggestion is, is that if you all were given a more detailed plan to review today, I question whether staff has had an opportunity to review that plan and whether their existing staff report still applies to the proposal before you tonight.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate it. Is that?
Sorry, I wasn't sworn in before. May I be sworn in?
I will have to swear you in. Will you be introducing new relevant testimony?
Yes.
Would you please, after being sworn in, sign the log?
Yes, absolutely. And sorry, everyone, that I didn't do this earlier.
In which case? This is unusual, but this is important. Please say after me, "I swear or affirm."
I swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give before this commission?
That the testimony I'm about to give before this commission.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
And a penalty of perjury?
And no penalty of perjury.
Thank you.
And my name's Laura Aubrey.
Laura Aubrey?
Yes. I'll make it quick. I'm a property owner and a business owner at 820 North Bullard Street. I also have small children, and my business is also centered around families and children. And I just wanted to state that I don't have concern for my family or my business about this applicant being approved with maybe similar conditions set upon them, such as if they were to lose their cannabis license, or maybe even have any violations or a certain amount of violations with the state that it be revoked. I do think that because there'll be no more, because the town ordinance changed, that's a part of where my opinion's coming from. I can see that if this were going to be an ongoing preference or request from businesses and the town would be, and that corridor would be oversaturated with similar businesses, of course, I would see a concern, but I no longer have that concern because of the new ordinance that was passed on the 28th. So I do think that their application should be approved, and I like the idea of there being more diversity downtown, especially because their businesses centered around retail. I could see, I mean, I see around me every day, when businesses are open, it helps everyone. When there's more foot traffic, it's better for everyone. And so I personally think it's a great opportunity for there to be more people downtown that might not come downtown otherwise for the existing businesses that are there. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
I would like to make it known of my displeasure that Laura was able to swear in to this one after we all did, because I would have sworn in before to talk about the case before.
Do you wish to cross-examine Laura?
No.
Do you wish to add any to your testimony?
I would have testified before if I had known I could have sworn in.
Do you wish to testify now?
To the case prior?
To this prior case?
No, I'm just saying that her being able to be sworn in after we did was not fair, because I didn't get to be sworn in after the fact that they did for the case before.
And that is why I always ask if there's anyone else left who would like to testify. So I appreciate your input. Thank you very much.
I'd like to also register a difference in treatment, and you did absolutely say, if there was anyone who would like to testify, that at no time during that prior meeting was it ever indicated and said explicitly, is there anyone who has not yet sworn in who would like to testify? Because there were a number of people who would have chosen to do that as the meeting unfolded. And so that, and the unequal time of which there was no notice, so people were having to change their very carefully-prepared testimony and not able to print it out, is just, is not an equal treatment under the law. And also allowing informality of the applicants, of being able to come back up without being time-bound while the citizens are unduly time-bound. When we came into this meeting, understanding that we would have five minutes, and then finally, the fact that this meeting today was not published on the website, the town's website, until well into the afternoon yesterday, and it was buried down, and people were looking for it. So there were many other people who, either because they worked and there was short notice, or because they couldn't even find the notice because it wasn't there yet, or it was, you know, buried three layers down. And so I just want to say, for future proceedings, I would really, really hope that there is an evaluation of the equity between and among the parties. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your feedback. This meeting existed because of a recess, and that is a process that's discussed in the Open Meetings Act, and we do our best to comply with that, and I would, I appreciate your thoughts. One other thing, there's been a couple of people commented on the limiting. There is a specific provision in the land use and zoning code, and it's also a recommendation of the New Mexico Municipal League that, given the volume of people who wish to speak, there could be a limit to the number who speak and the duration, and specifically kinds of contact, such as duplicative information. And we always want to give the maximum flexibility to people. Some of the testimony this evening has been duplicative, and some of it is on issues that we've already said. We know these are concerns. So I do thank you very much for your patience in that. How many other people want to be sworn in after the fact? I, I agree with the issue of fairness, and I do my best. Thank you. With that, is there any commissioner who has any questions you need resolved right now? Okay, not hearing any. Staff, any immediate questions? I am going to move that we do go into executive session, the CUN-10 NMSA 78, 10-15-1H3, with discussions limited purely to what has been raised during this hearing. No decisions will be made. When we come back, I will ask the commissioners to confirm that. So that is my motion. Is there a second?
A second, yes.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing unopposed, we have our executive session. Calling the meeting back to order. We came back from an executive session, and I'm going to ask each commissioner if we limited our discussions to the issues that were raised in this public hearing and that no decisions were made. And if we could please do a roll call on that.
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Bayless?
Yes.
Chairman Wheaton-Smith?
Aye. Thank you. I will make the motion, learning from the previous motion that we made. I'll put my glasses on so I can read it. I move to approve Conditional Use 25-04, a conditional use permit for cannabis retail within historic downtown commercial district at the property addressed as 306 North Bullards. At the property addressed as 306 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, legally described as subdivision Fraser Block 91, Lot 8, 0.043 acres, joint tenants, with four conditions. The first, this conditional use permit is limited to this applicant at this site only and is not transferable. Second, this conditional use permit has a life of 12 months, after which the applicant must renew by proof of progress or licencia. Condition number three, the applicant must issue correction, implement best practices for odor mitigation. Condition number four, if cannabis license is revoked, the conditional use permit is That's the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any debate?
No.
Once again, all interested parties can appeal to city council, and also keep in mind that the regulations these folks must adhere to are very stringent, and they're enforced at a state level, and they're monitored very closely. So if anyone has issues with this operation, and they see that, they can report it to the authority in the state capital. And so you do have recourse, no matter what we decide here today.
Thank you. Any other discussion, debate? Not hearing any. In which case, could we please do a roll call on the motion to approve Conditional Use Permit 25-04, a conditional use permit of cannabis retail within the historic downtown commercial district of the property addressed to 306 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, legally described as subdivision Fraser Block 91, Lot 8, 0.043 acres, joint tenants, with four conditions, as previously stated?
Commissioner Stone? Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye.
With that, the motion, the ayes have it, therefore the motion passes. The effect is, will be as before, that Community Development will draft up a notice of decision and fine-tune the language of the conditions, make sure they meet all the requirements. And when it's mailed, that starts the timeline for an appeal, and I would encourage anyone who wishes to appeal, to contact Community Development and indicate why you have the ability to appeal, and secondly, what mistakes you believe the commission made in its findings. And with that, that closes this hearing. Thank you. We will continue. The agenda has continued business, of which there is none.
Good. I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Did I screw up?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Not so bad.
Continued business, there is no new business, there's no reports from staff.
Thank you, Commissioner, or thank you, Chairman. We will be introducing a new Community Development Director next week. Her name is Susan Mittelstadt, and she will be joining Town Staff. So I'm pleased to present that to you, and that is all I have for now.
Thank you. Any reports from commissioners? Commissioner Stone?
No reports.
Commissioner Bayless?
Yeah, I don't know if it counts as a report, but I want to congratulate the folks that put together this storefront. This is going to be a great addition to the byway down there on Bullard. So if you're able to bring that off, that'll be very attractive, and it'll be an addition to the, just the way the place looks. And as people go by, they'll see something that fits. So thank you.
And Commissioner Wood?
No.
For me, this is my last public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I take up the role in January of being the mayor, and I want to say that I'm very impressed with the commissioners that we've had in my almost seven years on the commission. And I also appreciate the public input that we've had, and I am very proud of the commission in the last year, year and a half, with all the meetings we've had, and I encourage people who do have concerns about the land use code, please do go to the commission and raise them. We did have a two-day meeting last year with the public and stakeholders, and that gave us valuable insights. And a lot of the input this evening, I can understand the frustrations, please understand that we have to follow the facts as we see them, blended with the legal advice we get, compared to the required findings. Our personal opinions have got nothing to do with it. Thank you very much for your patience. I've done everything I can to maximize input to come up with the best decisions that we can make. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second it.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, hearing ended. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.